We have had that. Shall we? Alright, so I'm going to call this public hearing to order, continuation of a public hearing for Quist and all three Latvian subdivisions for 255 and 257 V Brook Road. At 7:04, I will seat myself and Carol and Jennifer and Demi via Zoom. Let me just, just kind of recap. I mean, this has been, this, this application's been continued a few months because the applicant was waiting on Health Department approval, which they finally got. They've also submitted a revised septic plan or see if I can actually pull it up here. Where is it? Is it not? Down here a second. That's the map. Oh, here it is. There we go. So let me try this again. There we go. Let's see if this pops up. Technology. Hey, Demi, can you see that?
Yep.
Alright. Here, I'll make it a little bigger, maybe. And that's, that's pretty much full screen for me, Demi. I mean, we, this is what we were we were waiting on. The other stuff, the same as before. Just a reminder for the sake of the recording and the public record. At an earlier meeting of this hearing, the Planning Commission approved three waivers for this application, one for a partial waiver of the application fee, waiver of the open space requirement because the subdivision is taking place entirely within family members. And the third one is all for the, for a sign. We're posting a sign. So, and so we don't have to deal with those issues. They were already dealt with earlier. The only new information here is this revised site development map that shows the proposed house. Which is here. Here's the, the well, the clearance. We have had that. It's like Shelley, alright, so I'm going to call this public hearing to order, continuation of a public hearing for Quist and all three Latvian subdivisions for 255 and 257 V Brook Road. At 7:04, I will seat myself and Carol and Jennifer and Demi via Zoom. Let me just, just kind of recap. I mean, this has been, this, this application's been continued a few months because the applicant was waiting on Health Department approval, which they finally got. They've also submitted a revised septic plan or see if I can actually pull it up here. Where is it? Is it not? Down here a second. That's the map. Oh, here it is. There we go. So let me try this again. There we go. Let's see if this pops up. Technology. Hey, Demi, can you see that?
Yep.
Alright. Here, I'll make it a little bigger, maybe.
It's toys.
And that's, that's pretty much full screen for me, Demi. I mean, we, this is what we were we were waiting on. The other stuff, the same as before. Just a reminder for the sake of the recording and the public record. At an earlier meeting of this hearing, the Planning Commission approved three waivers for this application, one for a partial waiver of the application fee, waiver of the open space requirement because the subdivision is taking place entirely within family members. And the third one is all for the, for a sign. We're posting a sign. So, and so we don't have to deal with those issues. They were already dealt with earlier. The only new information here is this revised site development map that shows the proposed house. Which is here. Here's the, the well, the clearance. And then it looks like a septic field over here, which is clear of this well, which I believe is yours.
So he even changed the title on this, on the page CS101. He had it labeled something else. That's what was confusing me. So you did bring me a copy of this revised one. I'm gonna need to take one for our file.
I think health, the health.
Health on two copies.
Did they not give you one?
No.
Okay, I have, I have an extra.
Okay.
Okay, so how this generally works is that, you know, commissioners can ask questions, whatever, first, and we'll open it up to the public if, see if they have any comments. And then we'll, you know, based on that, we'll, we'll go from there. I, I'll, I'll go ahead and start. I really only have one question on this. And it concerns the, it concerns the spot here at the end of the pond, the, the, the label, the common area.
Yeah.
Okay, so as I'm looking at this, that's gonna stay, it's currently part of your property.
Currently?
And it's gonna stay that way.
Currently is part of all of our property. This is, all that property, most of that property belongs to all three of us as it is right now anyway, till this gets finalized.
Well, according to the land records, according to the tax assessor, you're the one that gets taxed on it. So it's your land. So, I mean, this, and where's this land you speak here? Okay, I understand that, that you all, it's your land, but technically speaking, for the purposes of this, it's part of 255.
Okay.
Okay, and it's staying part of 255.
It is common ground. And so it's common.
And that's all three of their names on it.
So that's going to belong to all three property owners.
So is it a separate?
As it does right now, it still, it belongs to all three of them.
But who gets the tax bill?
Well, I mean, it says all three names. It comes into our mailbox, but it's all three names.
So is the tax as a separate parcel than from the rest of your property?
It would have to be. I would leave that up to the assessor, I guess, to figure that or it's, it's not a building lot. It's, it's just property.
No, I know, I understand. I was like, the, the reason I, I mean, the, the reason I bring this up, I mean, see, it's, oh, I'm sorry, I'm the reason I bring this up is that is that technically as the as the lines are drawn, they're including the pond as part of your lot. Okay, so that, that makes that area actually contiguous. It's actually contiguous. You know, just, I mean, just imagine you dreamed the pond. Okay, so that's, so it looks, because of the pond, you may think it's a separate piece of land, but for taxing and land use purposes, it's actually not a separate piece of land. It's part of your land. Okay, legally speaking. Now, that's fine with us. I mean, I'm not, my, my question is that I'm assuming there are no plans amongst the three of you to like put language in each of your deeds that spells out the
That's something we're gonna have to do with a lawyer.
Right. Now, it's not necess, it's not necessary for purposes of this stage, but, you know, I would definitely make arrangements that somehow you, because, you know, forever's a long time. And of course, you're not gonna have any issues here, but a hundred years from now, maybe one of these houses isn't owned by a Quist anymore. I mean, I, you know, I can't, I can't know. And, and so that, you may not want to deal with a situation where somebody thinks they have access to this common land, or maybe the others don't want to grant them access to that, you know, you know, that needs to be spelled out.
Oh, legally, yes.
And, well, well, the, the easiest way is that you, you have a map here showing this little thing called the common area. And you can just add a line to your, your deed saying, you know, basically spelling out like the rights to that, you know, in each one of those, and reference the map.
Right.
You know, which will be on public record. So you know, I highly recommend that. So it's not an issue for you now. I mean, it's like
That is, that's in the plan. And, I mean, mainly it's become, I mean, that is the, the dyke built by the Army Corps of Engineers, right? That's the end of the pond, that area. And so we all want to maintain that together.
Sure.
And
Oh, no, I totally get, yeah, I was like, I'm just, this is just kind of like a shot across your bow, so that, you know, so I just don't want you to like, you know, you, you, you don't want your kids, you know, like, years from now going, what were they thinking? What, yeah, yeah. It's like, okay, so that was my, that's really my only question about this. Okay, so that sounds like you, you've, you've already thought of that?
Yeah.
That's, that's good. Commissioners, any questions or comments on this? Demi's good?
Good.
Okay. Okay, members of the public, is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this? Hearing no one, nothing will comment from the public. Are, how are we in this, folks? Are we, are we good with closing this? Okay, I would move that we close the public hearing for Quist and all, 5, 255, 257.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As I, okay, public hearing is closed. Alright then, moving on, here, let me stop sharing. Okay, so now, we're gonna open our regular meeting of the Washington Planning Commission, and I'm gonna seat the same members. First order of business is approval of the minutes of our last meeting. Thank you, Shelley. They were great. I have no corrections or additions. So
I wasn't here.
Well, that's right, you weren't here. I, I would move this.
I didn't set an alarm.
I would move that we approve them without, as submitted.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, moving on. I don't actually have a
The, the, the agenda's right up there.
Oh, I have it on, I have it on my screen, but I'd rather save it for something else. Okay, good. Okay, motion to include items on, not on the agenda. Anyone have anything tonight? Want to include, going once, twice? Digby, you got anything? How about you? Do you have anything on the agenda? Anything? Oh, maybe he does. It's like, no? Okay. Fine. Okay, a new application. So we have a new application for a scenic road designation for Upper Churchill Road. Submitted by Christopher, is that Canizaris? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, I saw some of this, I think, is, is the application, yeah, the application appears to be complete?
Complete, yeah.
Okay, the only thing we would do at this meeting is to schedule a public hearing. We can't really debate this right now until we post it. So why don't we schedule this for our next meeting, which has actually been changed?
So what are, what did we agree?
No, well, 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 right now, the, the next meeting is actually October 15.
Okay.
So because we, we, we had, we, we messed up when we made our calendar at the beginning of the year, October 1st, which is, would normally be our meeting, is Yom Kippur. So we can't have it then, and we can't have it the next day because the town hall's closed. So it would be tough to have a meeting. So we moved it to the 15th, so I would move that we schedule a public, a public hearing for this application for a scenic road designation for our next, our next Planning Commission meeting, which would be October 15th. At 7:00 PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of that scheduling? Uh, thank you, Christopher. The public hearing will be on the 15th of October. It'll be the first order of business. So we'll start right at seven o'clock with it.
Thank you so much. Looking forward to it.
Okay, very good. Okay, pending applications. Quist, Fredland, Bailey, V Brook Road, for your subdivision. This is about as clean and as, 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 as these things come, this is, if only they were all like this. I have no, I don't even have any conditions that I want to place on this approval. I don't, I don't, I, I mean, Demi, do you got anything?
Jude says he's all for it.
Okay, Jude's, yeah, well, okay, well then, yeah. Alright, so then, look, I, I move that we approve the re-subdivision application of Quist, Fredland, Bailey, 255, 257 V Brook Road for a three-lot re-subdivision without conditions?
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Group, congratulations, gang. You have your, you have your re-subdivision.
Got too complicated trying to pay the tax bills, right?
If only any others were like this. We're sorry that you got, you know, I mean, there was a big snag, but, you know, usually it's us that get the snags, so we're kind of relieved that, you know. It's always bad for us if we mess up. It's like, so
Thanks for your help. Really appreciate it.
No problem, hey.
Would you give me the coffee?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
Great.
And yeah, and I do, and
So they bring the Mylar and then I'll call you and you can come and sign.
Right, yeah, well, yeah, okay, so, yeah, if you want
I'll leave a note with Tammy. If you bring it next week, I'm not gonna be, it's a Mylar, because when you file the Mylar, it's gotta be signed by Wayne.
Okay.
What is my
Where do they get this copied on Mylar and bring it in?
Well, yeah, if you're gonna file
Well, the, 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 the the septic plan doesn't get, is not the Mylar.
It's the survey.
It's the survey by the, by the
By Mike Alex.
By the
I think we've already filed all that, right?
Yeah, that
Did you file it already?
Yes.
Okay, I'll check.
Okay, well, it hasn't been signed. It doesn't, it doesn't count until I sign it.
And also, because this has been a thing, it's not really legal in Connecticut, the subdivision, until you file your, your revised deed as well.
Yeah, so and
Tell me what I need to do?
So you, you, you
File revised?
You'll have to, you'll have to file revised deeds for the, for the three
Talk to attorney.
So then we'll talk to
Yeah, and, and this, and in fact, if you, if you're gonna do that, this is the time
To add that one.
To add the language reference in the common area because you, you, you've gotta have them, you gotta have them revise the deeds anyway.
Okay, got it.
So, you know, it's like, kill two birds with one stone.
Okay.
Uh, and you have plenty of time to do this. We actually have 60 days before we have to sign Mylar. So it's not like if we don't sign it next week, you
Think you have Mike's Mylar?
Yeah.
If not, we have one here.
If
If there are no changes, and I don't think there are.
I'll check with Millie. I don't have it. I remember. New, new. I didn't want that.
Okay, so so, well, if you have one, hang on to it, okay, for now. We may need it. It's like
So Shelley, you'll be in touch with me then, or do I need to call you, or how, how do we?
Uh, I believe, so Donna will be sending you a notice, uh, telling you to file the Mylar on the land records. And there's usually a, I think, like a $60 fee. I don't know. It's, it's Millie's
Whatever the clerk does, yeah. Yeah, so, but but yet, I mean, you'll want your attorney to do the deed stuff first. Okay, then, and then, because typically how we do this is when, when, before I sign a Mylar, I usually run, I literally just go upstairs and I check to make sure that the deeds have been filed. So, because if they're not, and I sign it, that doesn't mean anything. Okay, so, so, so it's attorney, deeds, Mylar, and then you're really, really, really done. Okay? Okay?
Alright.
Congrats. Okay. Okay. Good night now. Okay. They get to leave. Cracks. Okay, going on here. It's like, wow, we actually, okay, committee updates, Sustainability Committee.
I forgot to bring my notes. I'm gonna have to get help from Michelle. I remember we discussed the benches that we're getting. We already got one or two benches for the styrofoam.
For the film plastic recycling?
Yes.
Yes, we got one for the first thousand pounds that we recycle. I think they're worth another second.
Yeah, Michelle, why don't you come up there today?
Um, yeah, so I, we definitely got the first. I don't know where it was placed. We had a couple of picnic tables? No, not the picnic tables. We purchased those with end-of-year money, which is great. They're over by the river. The bench that we earned by recycling a thousand pounds of film plastic, which is phenomenal, crazy.
Lot of film.
That's a lot of grocery bags. I know, and we're well on our way to another. So I forget where that bench went. We'll, I'll have to ask about that. Like, I saw it arrive in the box, but I don't know where it got assembled. But we had talked about, like, down
Down by the river.
Down by the river or at the pavilion, you know, somewhere over there by the Riverwalk somewhere. So we'll, we'll ask about that. But we also talked about our move, so
The charging stations?
Yeah, so the charging stations, we have two. I got a voicemail from Vince today that they need like a docu-sign stuff, but the bottom line was that Eversource gave us $19,300 and change towards, towards each of them. So we're just getting that paperwork finalized. So the
Two.
For two, an EV charger at Titus and an EV charger up at Nick Platt. So, and we have money in the budget to cover the balance. Each installation is around $23,000 full, and they're covering almost $20,000.
Wow, that's bad.
So yeah, it's almost $40,000 of grant money coming from Eversource that we just are trying to get the final paperwork
I guarantee that's the Infrastructure Act money.
They're actually giving them?
Yeah.
Well, no, it's the stuff, apparently it's on our bills. Like, we all are paying towards it.
On public benefits charge.
Yes, and then they award it out until it's gone. But I found this company first, I forget right now. I was, went to CCM conference, and they helped us get the application in on time, and they knew exactly when the applications opened, and we were within the first, like, month, because it's a first-come, first-served.
Excellent. Did you have to pay him for that service?
Wow.
No, I mean, maybe
For one CCM, yeah, for one CCM, you know, of course, you know the nickname of, you know, the CCM, right?
I don't, but I can imagine it's very nice.
Well, yeah, CCM is like, is like, Connecticut Conference of Municipalities.
Yeah.
Well, this language is the Conference of Complaining Mayors.
Okay.
You, you were at one of those meetings. I'm sure you heard your share.
When you go to the conference, it's just all of these people who want to work with municipalities, whether it's
I've actually been to one of their meetings, and it's, it's a lot of complaining mayors.
Yeah, the conferences are fantastic, right? It's this huge, yeah. So, so those are in the works. The, this season, the Sustainability Committee is hosting a series of film slash discussions around plastic. And it's, you know, the harms to your, your health, harms to the environment, and ways to reduce your plastic use. So, I mean, recycling is great, but unfortunately, most of it doesn't actually get recycled, so we really want to talk about how to use less plastic.
They were trying to figure out a way to get people, when they go to the grocery store, to either bring a bag, you know, or bags, bring their own bags, or not allow them to put stuff in plastic bags.
Oh, I think store can.
Does store feed them anymore?
You can actually bring your own produce bags, and we have purchased some cotton produce bags to hand out to the first, whatever, 30 people that come to our film series, so
Well, I don't even put, like, I mean, I don't usually put them in. I don't even put it in a bag. I mean, I mean, you know, unless it's stuff that, you know, like cherries or something, but they always come in a bag anyway.
Right, 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 right. Well, so you can have these, like, mesh, cotton mesh bags, like, if you want to put the free like apples or oranges in it, so they're not like rolling around your card or whatever, on the, you can put them in a bag.
Roll around.
And well, and some people buy them pre-bagged, but it's just what, so, and we'll have a lot of other, other things there. We have some bamboo toothbrushes and some glass jars. Anyway, working on a reducing plastic film discussion series, partnering with the library to
Okay.
to do that. And
When is that again?
So the first, we're shooting for, the first one to be October 28th. The second one, we're thinking February, and then the third one, depending on the reception and everything, will be around Earth Day.
What was that thing about the, the library closes? And the film was gonna be over at the same time that the library closed, so how is that?
So we just, so Julia and I met with Audra today, and we're shooting for October 28th. Six o'clock, library closes at eight. The film is an hour, gives us an hour for Q and A and handout and stuff like that. Yeah.
Great, great.
Um, the only other thi, well, two other things, is the committee is working really hard with the transfer station to really clean up the website where it's trash and recycling. A lot of that data is 15 years old and the information. So we're, we're working with that. We have a new sign that we made up there talking about what you are required to recycle, what you are encouraged to recycle ordinance, and we're gonna get the website work on. And then we're gonna also work on the sustainability website, because there have been a lot of changes. You know, right now, it just says single-stream recycling, but we're doing a lot of other stuff. Companies, and, and we're actually trying to separate out our glass and film and plastic, so working on that.
Okay, great. Uh, well, since, I got you, I, okay.
I know, I, I brought my, I, I always just bring my agendas from the last meeting.
No, well, as long, as long as I get you on a roll, Michelle, give us an update on economic development, because I missed the last week, so
Yes, uh, so I got a couple of things. The, the first one is, we are gonna be on the agenda for Parks and Rec on Monday to talk about the Nick Platt fields, where the EV chargers going, the Parkinson's, but also we had talked about putting a bathroom up there. And so the businesses asked us, and Jim, the businesses asked for a porta potty. Jim actually said, why don't we just build a bathroom? So it was felt that we really need to go to Parks and Rec to talk to them about that, since it's a, one of the parks in town, so we're gonna just explain sort of what we've been asked to do and explore what we can do. The money, the EDC has money in the budget this year only to do an exploratory, to do some perks, to see, maybe some plans, you know, $2,000. We don't have the money to build something, but
Would we be allowed to put in, like, an incinerator?
Well, so it's interesting you say that. Liz Spenton, who's on EDC, said that they had a composting, something, and the Hollister House. So I've emailed them asking for specs on that. Maybe? I mean, it's actually
Those are very affordable.
Yeah.
Very
Yeah, I'm thinking beside, instead of having a Yeah, I'm thinking beside, instead of having a, 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 put it in and having all that.
So, there, there's actually almost two and a half acres up there.
Hmm.
Um, I know, it's like two point three, I think, um, I know.
Optical illusion. And then I look at, I can't imagine it being that big.
I pulled it up, I, I, I think so, um, and we're, I don't think it's gonna be very high use, uh, we're talking just a one. They, so, I don't know what the requirements are, in septic, would seem.
Hollister House is not high use either.
Right, I, I mean, so, it's like overflow parking and park hours, like, five cars a day.
They can actually, they can actually handle quite a bit of, I, um. Yeah, use, yeah. Um, I actually have some experience watching these in action, the compostable, but, I, you know, when I was still doing the recording business, you know, every summer I would do all the festivals, you know?
Yeah.
And one of the festivals I would always record is, uh, is Maverick Concerts, which is up in Woodstock.
Oh.
Woodstock, New York.
Yeah, yeah, I've been there.
These love those, yeah, it's like, Woodstock, New York, yeah, and, um, but, um, this, this venue, it's this old, it's literally just a shack in the woods, they have chamber music concerts at, it was, it's like, it's the oldest, um, chamber music summer venue in the United States, it's like, it's.
Wow.
But, and it, but it's literally a shack in the woods, it is, it, so it has no plumbing, it, I mean, they barely have electricity, they have enough like, they have a, they have electricity, they can put the lights on the stage, that's, that's basically it, and, but they put in, you know, basically his and hers versions of the compostable toilets, and they've been there for years, and of course, they have a concert, you know, be a hundred and fifty people there.
I think that's, that's what they have at Charles Town Beach in Rhode Island, to the town.
I think they do, they have that, yeah, and, you know, they, you know, there's concerts, you know, I got a hundred and fifty people there in concert, whatever, or sometimes more, whatever, intermission, no problems.
Yeah, well, we're gonna look into it, um, we don't, we don't have plan, this, it's, it's interesting, because it's kinda one of those, it's town land, it's a park, it's the E D C, do we, who do we talk to first? Because there's buildings and grounds, there are the neighbors, there's zoning, there's health, there's.
Slap.
So, well, the slapman are on board, because this was Jim's idea.
If it's a municipal, uh, what you call facility, it's, it doesn't really have to have a lot of red tape to go.
I think that's what I'm thinking.
I think you can get rid of some of the alphabet soup under that circumstance.
Right, because it's town owned, and it's a, a municipal, just like a pavilion, it's not in a commercial district, but it's town owned, so there's a whole section under that, so, so we're just gonna start with Parks and Rec, it, it's an exploratory, we wanna just.
Why not, you don't have the money to build it now anyway, so let's just, you know.
We just wanna find out, we, you know, we have a little bit of money to do in a, to either do some engineering or some plans, uh, talk to people, so that's the idea.
Okay.
Um, but it would be really nice for New Preston, I mean, the challenge here is that the town does not own any land in New Preston except for this little park, and there are parking issues, facility issues, there's a lot of issues. So, um, it would be nice, I think, to put a little money and develop this little park.
Well, I know, I know from the owners, the, the store owners, you know, ba- bathrooms are a huge issue, because some of those stores don't have bathrooms themselves.
They don't, right, they're on, they're, they have no capacity.
Right, none, and it's like, and, you know, so, it, you know, when I talk to a couple of them about, you know, oh, maybe having a charging station up, you know, or, uh, when you talk to them about just putting parking up at Nick Platt, they're like, oh, the, the people don't wanna do that, they're never gonna walk but down and walk back wherever, well, if there's a charging station and a restroom, they'll park there.
Yeah, they might, so, I, I've got the maps, it is point two miles, I actually walked it, I forget, it was like three hundred steps.
Yeah.
But, when you see some of the creative parking that happens on the weekends in New Preston.
Oh, yeah.
Right, like, you can either park your fancy car in the middle of an intersection, or you can walk less than five minutes, it's really very, it's so.
It's pretty too.
It's a beautiful little walk, right?
Business for some kid, you know, drive their cars up the hill.
Right, or even if they, you know.
Valley parking in New Preston.
Employee parking.
Oh, my god.
It's really not far. So, I don't think it'll be hugely used, but, you know, that overflow on a busy Saturday, a handful of cars, uh, just, and, and the fact that there are amenities there, you know, if we put in a bathroom, we would clearly put in a water fountain or water bottle, water bottle filler. So, yeah, yeah, so I think it would be a nice, um, nice thing for the town to do. Um, at our last meeting, too, uh, the sidewalks, the start of sidewalks, the, uh, the bid documents were completed, and so hopefully, I don't know where we are in the bid process, I have to follow up on that, but, we have engineering to go from the plaza down up, all the way to the bridge and up to Marty's, so, with just town money, because no grants have come through yet, so we're gonna start chipping away at it.
Good.
Um. Yeah, Jim reported that the work on the New Preston Falls dam is going well, almost completed, and that the ambulance building is going well and almost completed.
They made it larger, and they did some of our sustainable building things, right?
Yeah, yep, which is great, which is great, and actually, there is, I had a meeting just last week with Shay and another company, I forget what it's called, Bolt, so, uh, uh, it's a, a, a different, um, E V charging company that got a grant, uh, but it's, it's, it's this really cool concept, it's this fixture goes on a light pole, and you pull, you, you use your app to, to sign up, and it lowers the charging cord, so it's, there's no base in the ground, it lowers the cord and you charge from there. Uh, we may have missed this round of funding, but, um, we're gonna have them come and just look at the sites that we have to see in case Eversource falls through, or whatever, so.
We're gonna need more, we're gonna need more over time.
Yes, 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 well, and the, because the infrastructure requirements for their kind of charger are different, we're actually gonna look, so, right now, we're looking for the Eversource ones down at Titus and at Nick Platt. Here, I think we were gonna look at the library and Whitehorse, um, as places where, because they're not town owned, which is not a requirement for this grant.
Because they're on a pole.
They're on a pole.
So technically, Eversource.
Well, they prefer it not to be an Eversource pole.
Well, most of the poles in town are actually Frontier.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah.
Well, so, so, we're gonna.
Eversource administers the poles, but most, it, it depends, it depends on the streets sometimes, it's like, I mean, but, pole, most utility poles are owned by whoever got there first a century ago.
Who did Frontier by, uh?
Um, A T and T.
T, Ma Bell.
Ma Bell, yeah, so some, some poles were originally put in by Ma Bell, and some were put in by the Connecticut Light and Power Company, I mean, so it's, it all depends on who got there first, and, you know, some, some are actually co-owned, but mostly, it's like, it can go by street, like, on, on my street, they're all owned by the, by the phone company, but I know there's some streets in town that they're owned by the electric company and all the cars.
Depot is actually owned by the electric company, in order to get this grant for these E V chargers, we had to turn in all of the town's electric bills, because it's sort of, it, there's like a percentage of what you're paying, I don't know, there's some big formula.
Yeah.
Um, and Eversource, because of the street, it's the streetlight poles.
Gotcha, right.
Right, and that's where we're pulling the energy for these E V chargers, whereas these others, I don't exactly understand how it works, but anywhere you've got a light, they can.
They can, they, they know there's a terminal there they can tap into.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so we're just gonna talk to them, it's sort of a fact finding, it might be, you know, from down the road, but just, they're very cool looking, and, like, it's just amazing, yeah.
Neat, okay.
Yeah.
Great, all right, thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome.
All right, um, P O C D, we have, we have several things to share here, actually, we have maps. Um, they're, they're not, they're, they're drafts, and they're gonna have to be corrected, but we can submit them, because, well, the plan's a draft, so the map can be a draft too, so, um.
Who wants to feed to be the green?
Uh, we, but, we have other, we, we need to set a new public hearing date, we need to push it back. I, I think the e- the easiest thing at this point is let's push the, we should push it back to our regular meeting in November.
I was, I was just gonna say that.
Yeah, so we'll just, so, we have no problem with adjusting the public hearing date as long as we push it back, which we just can't call for.
Right.
So, um, so, for, yeah, no, so, um, so let's do this, why don't we agree to, to revise the public hearing date to November, I think it's, it's the fifth or sixth, whatever our, whatever our, um, regular meeting date in November is, uh, to November fifth. Um, so, should we, should we, I, I'll, I'll move the, I'll move that we revise the public hearing date for the P O C D to, uh, to seven P M on November fifth. Okay. Favor?
Hi.
Hi. So we, scheduling's done, um, also, um, we, we submitted the draft of the plan to the C O G, um, and we already got our response back, uh, Shelley shared it with me, um, and in fact, I can, it's so short that I can share it with you. Okay, um, this is from the Robert Phil, the, the head of the Northwest Hills Council of Governments. Uh, it says, uh, the, the C O G staff has reviewed the proposal, and offers the following consideration. Uh, in accordance with blah, 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 the staff of the Northwest Hill Council of the Governments finds no conflicts with regional plans or policies or concerns of adjacent towns, this is an excellent P O C D draft that addresses all requirements of Connecticut General Statute eight dash twenty-three, great work, great plan.
Thank you, wait.
Good.
All right, great work, great plan.
Jimmy, can we ever remember a P O C D where we got no comments from?
That's pretty good.
The, the C O G, I, I just, I, I think the last time it was like pages.
I, I may not have been paying attention.
Me either, me either at that point.
Yeah, so.
Good.
No, a, a, all the folks above us are, we're, we're good.
Good.
Okay, so, um.
Thank you.
So, maps, um, I have, let me see if I can find them here, they're, they're, they are drafts, because there's gonna be a couple changes, a show, uh, okay, here, here is the future land use, okay, let me see if I can.
Are you gonna be able to share those with us?
I'm, yeah, I can, I can email those to you as well.
That'd be great.
But I can, I, I literally just got them.
My, my, the one with all my notes is, I don't, I don't have with me.
That, that's okay, I, well, uh, okay, so it should pop up here, there we go.
Already, it looks better.
Well, this is the conceptual, now, there, there's, there's some mistakes, the, Shelley, um, Stacy apologized, she, she got our stuff, and she was able to do mu- but all the ones that involved educational stuff, so when she started to put them in.
It's still red.
Well, no, no, there, there's red, what happened is that, because the assessor data is flowed into the G I S system, every time, when she started changing some of these things, the plan, the, the program reverts, and it, it, it basically, every property that's owned by an educational institution, it reverted, made it red, no matter the, so look, if you look here in Marble Dale, you see this little red property here, that's not a school, that, that's property that happens to be owned by Glenhome, in which they've never done anything with, but because it's owned by Glenhome, the program automatically shifted it to be, and she's, and she's like, pulling her hair out, trying to get it not to do that, and it's like.
Yeah.
And this is one of the disadvantages of having these G I S programs, where you flow everything in, because, once she realized that, that assessor data is not the same as planning data, it, she, she got it, she was like, oh, I understand, now, yeah, and like, for example, like here, she got, here's Rumsey, okay, here's Rumsey Hall, now, here's the campus, now, she got the change for the, the hill, where the.
And the ice rink.
And then, in the ice rink, now, here's the other fields, and then here's, now, these are correct, because these are, like, the president's house is right, right here. And then the other fields are, and then, and these are fields.
The Brunson farm.
They, well, they, they bought this, yeah, but, but, one of these is actually not being used for the school, so it's owned by the school, like this big parcel here, but they're not doing anything with it, so it's kind of murky, now, we, now, like, um, now, like this here, this, this is actually a ho- the house on the, on one oh nine that's owned by Rumsey, and they, they're using it for, like, faculty housing, although I think they're gonna sell it, aren't they?
That's.
That's the plan, but, so, it's technically educational, because they've got faculty living there, so you could make a stretch. Uh, but, but then, it did things like this, there's some property here in Fen Hill Road, this is not an educational ins- property at all, this is, this is some guy's gotta get dirt bike thing.
Do they even show the property on two oh two, the Glenhome?
They don't have it filled in there.
They don't, that's weird.
This, well, this one, right, being in Marble Dale.
No, but that one, that looks like Aspasok, I don't know what that is, I was trying to see, they own that house.
Right, it's close to, it's the purple Christian, the urinary cake thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's in here.
It's not red, no, it's for the, it's closer to the.
It's closer, closer to Christian, like the.
Oh, like around here.
Yeah, it's around there.
Will you scroll down, I mean, I guess, yeah, red is educational, which, we asked that the colors stay consistent, and didn't red used to be commercial and educational used to be purple, did they, did they flip them?
I can't remember at this point.
Yeah, I can't.
But, but, but anyway, the, the important thing here is that she got the overlay zones.
Yeah.
See, and she kinda did them so they, you know, the, because that's the important thing for this map, is that we get those.
Future, it's not, it's not existing.
Right, this is, yeah, and, um, so, but we're gonna have to get the, these red things, and she, she, she pointed it out to me before she sent it, she just didn't want us to wave, she's still just trying to, trying to get the damn program to cooperate.
The main thing is, is, uh, how's our, um, existing?
Existing.
The existing is this without, is, is this without the, without the overlay zones, so, um, so what she said, because she was, she was worried about the overlays, I said, I said, the overlays look great, I was like, they're, they're, it's conceptual, they don't have to be exact, they just have to show people where we would want that residential district to be.
And for existing, which is the one we were having so much trouble with, this looks much better, there's much less red, the green seems appropriate, we scroll down though, what, some of the hash mark, because it was some of the multi, we wanted the, the categories to be the same.
Right, and then, and we, and she caught, yeah, some of the things, she caught the cemeteries, you know, which, you know, like, for example, you know, Judea Cemetery, wasn't because it's technically town-owned land, it was labeled municipal, and I was like, I was like, it's really a cemetery, and, and, and so, so she caught that, and, you know, the, she missed, she missed the cemetery at Saint John's.
That's the Underwood one?
Um, the Underwood one, which is up here. Yeah, that's the.
The Maget?
Maget, right, yeah, it's, uh, she did, it's, it's, it's here.
Yeah.
Yeah, um.
She has ours.
She has yours.
Yeah, I see that little yellow, or orange.
Yep.
Where?
It's in that dark green.
Uh, here, let me.
Yeah. Oh, there it is.
Yeah. The Avril Cemetery. Yeah, so.
Little cemetery.
She said that, yeah.
Oh, no, the Gats way over here in the, in the hash, in the, no.
The Marble Dash hash.
Hmm?
In the Marble Dale hash?
No, it's over there, that one, yeah, that's Magat, yeah, that's, the other one's the Christian Street one.
Yeah, there's the Christian Street, there's the Magat one, so, so, she's gonna correct this, this educational thing, because she's just like, once she started going and she, she was feeling, oh, God, I've got it, then.
Go down to, um, Shiner Mountain, I wanna see if they put that one private, did, did they put the private? The private one?
Private one.
Cemetery?
Just allowed it.
I didn't know there was one.
Yeah, it's some ballsy landowner down there wanted their own cemetery, they had to come there.
Their own chapel too?
Is it on the record?
No, that's.
Is it on the record?
That's up there.
Yeah, is it on the record yet, or?
I think so, yeah.
Oh, well, maybe, maybe, maybe it didn't pop up for her, it's like, I, I didn't tell her.
Maybe it's only public, public cemeteries.
Did you get to go up to that?
I don't think so, theirs is.
Well, yeah, true.
Yeah.
There's the chapel.
Or maybe it's.
I, I, I didn't, I know I didn't tell her about it, because I didn't know.
I wanna go.
So, well, look, perfect is the enemy of good. So, well, look, perfect is the enemy of good. Yeah, uh, so.
Didn't Bron, don't Bronson's, didn't Bronson's have a small private cemetery on their land?
There, yeah.
They did?
There is one by Rumsey.
I don't see it.
Well.
I don't know.
Holly there?
I don't know. I don't know. It's right, right before you turn, I've often wanted to pull in and see who's buried there.
Well, isn't that where the Episcopal Church was? That I don't know. Before it moved? Because they moved it.
Yeah, but they didn't.
They moved the cornerstones.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Yeah.
There's a whole.
Well, the the the, the thing she really needs to fix here is the educational.
Yeah.
These things popping up.
Well, so what's the other, no, go into the depot. Obviously, the, they've got the whole pavilion, that whole Riverwalk is educational, which, whatever. But what's kitty corner from that?
Here?
Where, like, the supply, no? Yeah, there, oh.
Right here, the supply?
That the supply?
Yeah, I don't know why that's red. It shouldn't be. Yeah, and the, and the old phone company building too.
I don't know, right? And then that green is the town hall? Or the plaza? I I mean, I don't know, you don't have to zoom in, it's hard to, the depot is so small.
It's not even. Not even gonna try.
Yeah, it's just, she, she was having real difficulties, you know.
I don't know why any of that is red in there, though.
Up farther.
Yeah, I, all of these, basically, for some reason, should the program just started?
Is the bus considered education?
But I, that doesn't explain the other three.
Yeah, these are, yeah, it's, no, this, this was the problem she was having. She said the thing just freaked out.
Yeah.
And it was just, it was just, it was just putting educational properties scattering.
And it's not, like, nothing else in the depot is educational, and then I see like three or four little.
Right, and these, these over here, these aren't educational, and it's like, and she couldn't find any rhyme or reason for it, that should the, should the plan, the program is basically just freaking out on her.
Uh, so, so. So obviously, that's Chapag. I don't know what that sliver is to the right of Chapag.
Yeah, this is Chapag here.
Yeah, and then, and they own across the street, the lower, no idea what that sliver is.
Don't know.
I know Rum, I mean, Frederick Gun owns.
This is, this is the South Street Field for Frederick Gun.
No, that is Frederick Gun.
No, Frederick Gun's up here. Here's the, here's.
Oh, yeah, 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 that's. And those little ponds is the next one, but then what's the one?
This is John Door here.
On the corner of Nichols.
No, that, well, it's. This tennis, whatever.
It's not really classified as educational, though.
No.
Yes.
Shelley, what are you doing?
I, the people have been telling me that he's holding a tennis thing there.
No, he's not.
Thank you. But somehow.
No, but why would it?
The program thinks he is.
There wasn't thought, though. He had originally wanted to like tie in with the agri-science program and like have some farming or something. I don't think that ever went through. I know, but.
Well, the thing is, if, it could be that on the assessor records, he's got something listed as, she said that if somebody has, you know, like, if somebody's living in a, on a, on a residential property and they're a consultant for like, you know, Joe Blow Educational Consultants, you know, now, it's a residence, it'll, it, their property will show up as an education.
People who consult on like high school and college placement, for example.
Right, and they they just operate, they're, they operate out of their house.
Nichols and the, you know, further out, followed Nichols out to, is that Nelson Hall?
You mean, over here? You mean, yeah, I don't know what this is. Again, it could could be, it could be somebody who's an educational psychologist who, who's operating out of their home office.
Okay.
This, this happens, in other words, if the assessor is, has got an inkling that you're doing any business in your house, then then they'll, they'll change your, they'll change the status of your property, because they're taxing your computer or whatever. And then, all of a sudden, they'll label it as a commercial property or an educational property, where, whereas everybody knows it's a residential property, but this is why, like she said, this is the problem when you dump assessor data into these programs, it's.
So, bright yellow, I'm assuming is R one, is residential.
Residential.
And light yellow is?
Is un, is is residential but not developed.
Really? Okay.
Right, in other words, you know, or vacant land, so it's it's R one, but there's, let's say, like, right here, this is the subdivision we just did a few months ago, but it hadn't been, but it, well, it's actually still undeveloped.
Yeah.
But but we just, you don't see the lines, because this map was done before we.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so, see, like, here, you know, here's, here's Whitehead's place, but the farmhouse is on that property. There was nothing on this property. That's why it's light, and this one is darker yellow, so. So anyway, um, what I propose is, let's just, let's just file these maps with, as as drafts, with the draft plan on the counter at clerk's office. And I'll send you the four that go with it, these two and there's two others, and we'll just, they're drafts, and, you know, the plan's a draft. So, uh, we've already gotten the go-ahead from the cog. So, which was, which was actually the thing I was worried the most about. I mean, obviously, it was like, didn't want to say, you know, the fact that we didn't get some laundry list of, you know, subsection D, whatever, needs to say, you know. We, you know, we, we got that last time, and it's like, so.
Wow.
You did a great job.
But, wow.
Yes.
It's like, well, second time, you know, you, 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 you know, you learn from the first time all that crap, it's like, and you just, so. So anyway, um, so we're just gonna, we're just gonna post it, and maybe we'll post it on the planning commission's page too, okay? I'll send you all that stuff when we can post it on the planning commission's page. We've already um, notified the cog and all that, so that the time, the the clock is all set with that. It's it's the, it's the cog that you have to have the sixty-five days. They've already signed off. So, um, so we're good to go on November fifth. I'm trying to think, there was one other thing. I don't, I think that's it, or get up, we're ba, we're literally all set for the public hearing now. It's all over about the, the, the crime. So, it's all, it's all over but the people showing up going, well, I didn't know that we were. It's like, what, what's, what's this about?
What forums did you have in every neighborhood?
What's, you know, yeah, what's this about invasive species? So, uh, okay, um, communications, oh, communications, um, this is Abby Marshall, resident of Washington, and she is interested in joining the planning commission as an alternate. And so she has some, it's some, you know.
You should have told us that before.
Well, I, I, I wanted her to get the real deal. Yes, as you know, as you can tell, it's, this is, um, this is a real serious group.
I love it. I love the dog. I love.
Yeah, but but but, we get, we get people's business done.
Yeah.
So, um, so anyway, welcome and thank you for, thank you for enduring an evening on behalf of public service. I'm trying to think, is there any, any administrative business or other communications? Although there is, um, one, uh, there is a public hearing that we have nothing to do with and can't do anything about, that was uh, the state sighting council is having a public hearing in December about a new cell tower that's gonna go up in Woodsland, I think, right?
They got notified. They got no, their school got notified.
Yeah, right, it's right, basically right next to um, Montessori. It's gonna be along two oh two.
When is the hearing gonna be?
December something in Hartford via Zoom. If you want to comment, you have to apply in advance, and you're limited to three minutes, and you have to, it it doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter, it's going up.
Yeah, we, we have no jurisdiction.
I, the last time when we were doing the, um, I don't remember if it was the one up at the town garage, the conservation commission.
Oh, yes.
All over it, and it's, it's basically, you're just spinning your wheels.
Yeah, there's no, the, 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 the state sighting council can override all local zoning reg, zoning, planning, wetlands regulations, and they do.
Wow, if they can override wetlands, we don't stand a chance.
I went through and I looked at the plants and I was asking the attorney and he, like, no, they can.
What's the property, though?
Seventeen Warren Road, I think.
Warren Road, because the town does, it's not town property, right?
No, no, it's a private person who struck a deal with a, a tower company. And, um.
Is that me forty-one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, and people, it's like, it's like, back in the day, you know, the zoning commission, you know, crafted ten pages of.
Is it only ten?
I think it's maybe twenty pages of cell tower regulations, which should just be struck from zoning regulations, because.
I would love Wayne to have at it. Love it.
You know, it's not worth the paper, it's not, it's not worth the digital ones and zeros, it's most of them Ethernet. You can't, you know, we can't do anything about it. It's like, the, the sighting council can do whatever.
Yeah.
Um, but it's communications, we were told at the public hearing, and it's like, you can zoom into it if you want, and if you want to make comments, you have to, you have to apply in exam, in advance.
The entire application is on the, I could give you the link if you, if you email me. But the book was about, it was, I think, even thicker than the Connecticut Bar Association somehow.
Oh, yeah, it was.
A little late night reading.
I'm like, oh, yeah, I want, and and then they sent me like five of them. I threw them all away. And I had, I had, I saved the digital copies. I'm like, do not put any more paper in my office.
But anyway, you know, sighting council, I think they, they could put a tower on a brownfield if they wanted.
Oh, my gosh.
Wow.
And they.
That's better than a wetland.
They have.
I mean, right, there's nothing else that can go there.
So, but anyway, um, that's the only communications that I had. Any administrative business?
No, other than we do have a new clerk.
Yes.
And she's wonderful.
Oh, she's gonna be doing housing as well?
I believe so, just the minutes from the recording, yeah.
Good.
Okay. I don't have the minutes from the last meeting, I think Judy was gonna do. What's her name?
Donna Szazinski. It's on the.
Oh, right here, look at that. Oh, that's wonderful. Well, that's great.
Okay, all in favor of a journey? Hi, thank you, Demi.
Oh, good to see you all.
Hope things are well.